Okay, it is six o'clock. Call the meeting order. Open the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Safety reports, again, mine fairly brief. We did have a meeting with our union and labor attorney advisor. We'll get into that. We talked about the police and fire wellness plans, and that's really all I have. Councilmember Lamont.
I was also at the labor negotiation meeting, and I also had two budget and finance committee meetings.
Lucky you, councilmember Hertzberg.
I was at the same two finance meetings. One was today. Then we had public works at five, and now we're here.
And now we're here. All right, thank you very much.
Big day.
Councilmember Rinkie?
I've had a very quiet two weeks with no meetings.
Oh, great. All right, and councilmember Gilmore had something up. He will not be here, so that's it for activity reports. We have no department head reports. We do have the consent agenda before us there, which are the minutes. There are none for approval, and the voucher is on page two, totaling $605,818.29. And with a note that there's a couple of updates here, item I and item J under new business, and item F under old business. You know, Meker Co-op easements, resignation of a firefighter, and then K-9 squad action under old business. So that's the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg, for approval of the consent agenda discussion. All favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried. And I should have noted also in my report that we do have to take a break at 6:30 for a public hearing in regards to the Mueller variance request. So with that, we have first on our agenda, the Fire Department Relief Association audit on page three, and we have 324ths of the department here to...
Same as one eighth.
Pardon?
Is that same as one eighth?
Yeah. I'm not that quick. All right, Brad.
Okay, let's get to it. Let's jump right into page 10 in your packet. Should say, Paintsville Fire Department Relief Association Statements of Activities in Governmental Fund Revenues.
Mm-hmm.
So we're just going to be looking at, that's our general fund. That's our fundraiser funds, so any balance, $36,474. Move on to page 11. Special Pension Trust Fund, that's our retirement, $606,036. So in essence, if you move to page 24, I believe, you'll find that we are 108.64% funded. So that's fully funded plus 8%.
Mm-hmm.
If you go on to page 25, it shows we made a 5% return on our investments. Nothing came back in our audit alarming, so everything's good. Take the opportunity to turn it back to page 24. You'll see that since 2001, we had one, two, three, four years where we were over 110% invested.
Mm-hmm.
Since 2008, we haven't raised our benefit level at all, since 2008. Every time we do, we look at the mark and go, ah, I just don't feel comfortable. So we need to come up with a plan. The plan I propose is that every time that we reach 110% invested, we increase $25. And also every time, you know, we would never do that two years in a row. Neil, you're looking at me like you're confused.
Not yet.
So does everybody understand what I mean by that? So that our benefit level right now is $2,000 per year. So if you put 20 years in, you get $40,000. So let's just say, for example, that this year we were 110%, we would then go to $2,025. So obviously, this year we won't do anything, but maybe next year we would. So that's our plan. I just wanted to be transparent about that, and that's what we'd be asking for in the future. I'm actually, I'd like a little feedback from you if you think that would maybe be appropriate or...
So you want to know if the council would pay that $25?
Well, ultimately, the council then is going to approve it, yes. It needs to be approved by the council if we were to make that increase.
But would they be paying it also?
No.
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 The council or the city...
Approving you guys to...
Yes, because if we were to become underfunded, the city has to, is responsible then. So we obviously want to have your blessing before we do anything like that.
I wouldn't have a problem with that. If it goes to 90, you're going to take that $25 back? Obviously not.
If it does go negative, we do need to, you know, we do need to address it, but that's why I put that safeguard in there. We'd never do it two, three years in a row, because you don't, you have to play...
Yeah, it's a pretty good, pretty good track record there of the funded ratio.
So anybody that cashed out would get $2,025?
Yes.
That would be effective for next year then, right?
Well, that wouldn't be effective until we're 110% over invested. So we'd have to hit that 10% over, 110% invested before we would do that.
Once you hit it.
Yes, so that's, that would be the year we would ask for that blessing.
Okay. Someone willing to put that into a motion?
Do we need a motion if you're not going to do it this year?
You really don't, I don't think, at this time. It's just more of a...
Well, if it did go, then you would come for...
Yes.
Okay. So it wouldn't be automatic then?
Okay.
Understand? And I see that councilmember Gilmore's not here, then he's one of the four that brought your balance down by quite a bit. We've taken a... Yeah, Mergans over there.
Now, our balance really goes down, but our liability also goes way down too. We've really only got, I think, three or four that are eligible right now to withdraw, so... In that way, we're doing really well.
Yep. Yeah, no, good audit, nothing in there that was... Out of line. Questions?
I don't know, that's a lot of paperwork. It's really overwhelming. So anytime anybody has a question, feel free to reach out to me. I'd be more than willing to talk it over, so...
I just was wondering what accounted for your investment loss? Page seven of your...
Ooh, let me dig that one again. What page are you on?
Page seven, page 12 of the packet. That's page seven of your document.
So in 2018, we had a very, it really took a dive and starting, I think it was March, and it didn't come back until December. So overall, we were up, but the investment was down. Also, we withdrew quite a fair amount of money that last year also.
Okay, who do you have managing your investments?
It's Meg, Meg Wealth, right next door here. So if you take the pension benefits paid, $162,000, you know, that's, we're up 5%, but we withdrew $162,000.
Mm-hmm.
That makes it any more clear.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the financial report. Years ended December 31st, 2018 and 2017.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, to approve the financial report. Years ended December 31st, 2018 and 2017. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried. All right.
Thank you very much.
You... If... You guys don't have to stick around. You might as well deal with item J under the update there too, as long as you are here. That should be fairly well cut and dry. But we have received resignation from David Lang, firefighter, effective September 21st. So we'd like a motion to accept that, and then the motion to start the process of creating an eligibility list for firefighters.
I move to accept the resignation of David Lang, firefighter, effective September 1st, 2019.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by Hertzberg, to accept the resignation of David Lang, firefighter, effective September 21st, September 1st, 2019. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried.
Move to start the process of creating an eligibility list for firefighters.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, to start the process of creating an eligibility list for firefighters. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried. All right.
Your honor, they have one more item under old business.
Oh, the training, that's right. That's coming back from the...
And we visited about that in budget and finance today, so...
Okay, that's, thanks for bringing that up. That is item D under old business, the fire training contract with Ridgewater on page 102. So we did have all our questions answered. So there's no issue then in proceeding?
I'll make the motion to approve the Ridgewater College Customized Training Income Contract between the City of Paintsville and Ridgewater College and authorize the mayor to sign the document.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, to approve the Ridgewater College Customized Training Income Contract between the city and the college and authorize the mayor to sign the document. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried. All right.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Now we're done. Okay, a little bit of time, so we'll get up to public works part of this year. So the 2019 Street CIP on page 57. And so we got a plan before us, and Ron will give us an update.
Okay, first of all, the 2021 proposed project is mostly all 2000 projects that were done in 2000. Morningside Avenue is also on there. That would require a little more than an overlap. That would be a complete mill and overlay and curb and gutter on the one side. The other streets would all just be overlays. 2023 is the downtown area. 2025, we have streets that were in the 2002, about 2005 area along with the industrial park area. And 2027, there are streets basically from the 2006 through the 2010 area. Most of them would just be mill and overlays. And then also, we do have projects scheduled out to 2029. The Public Works Committee did not make a recommendation on this tonight as they are looking for a little council input and direction, knowing that the budget constraints that we're looking at this year, and then also with the downtown uncertainties, we're, don't know if the council would like us to push everything back a year or two. So I guess that's kind of where we're at at this point. I guess if you're looking at the downtown, you know, it could be over, not overlaid, but seal quoted again and then pushed back and... But I guess that's where we would like some council direction.
What about the alleys in downtown? They seem to be, we don't want to push the alleys back too far.
They're in the 2021 project area, yes.
So the recommendation would probably for them to stay in the 2021 regard.
Yes, that would definitely be in the next, 2022 possibly, but they are getting to see their age, there's no doubt about it.
Well, and there's no rush to approve the CIP at this point in time?
No, it's just a document.
Budget and finance has been obviously meeting, as we heard about it earlier.
You'd want to take it to a working session? I guess that's entirely up to the council.
We do for one of those two, aren't we?
I think that's probably a good idea.
Good idea, yep.
Budget and finance meeting this afternoon.
I can't take anymore. Okay, well, last to have this on our next working session, and we'll look at, get some dates together and put out to the council to narrow that down, unless there are objections. All right, thank you. And anyway, we do have a preliminary plan before us to be thinking about. All right, and the next item is we're looking to set a public hearing for 6:30 PM on Tuesday, November 12th, for the purpose of certifying past due garbage, water and sewer, snow removal, and mowing bills to the county. That's this annual event.
I'll make the motion to set a public hearing for 6:30 on Tuesday, November 12th, 2019, for the purpose of certifying past due garbage, water and sewer, snow removal, and mowing bills to the county.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau, to set that public hearing. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried. All right, our next four, one, two, three, four, five, our budgeted transfers here, and we'll get an update from Renee on all of those, and then we'll take each one, D, E, F, G, and H separately, so you can give us a generic update on all of these.
These are all transfers from their respective fund to their capital improvement funds on page 62. So such as the first one is going from my general account to capital improvement for administration. The transfer on page 63 is the liquor store transfer to the capital improvement account, and that is also budgeted for in the 2019 budget. Page 64 is our bond payments that are, to pay our bonds, that are, payments that are due. As many of you know, this will go up by $100,000 for next year. That's the challenge we're having in budget and finance. And on page 66 is the transfer when the, Brad got his new pickup. The deal was that the building inspection capital improvement fund would reimburse sewer and water for a portion of that, and that's the transfer that's on page 66.
And 65 are all the, basically, the public works funds.
Yes.
All those budgeted transfers there. Any questions on all of those? Hopefully, we'll go through those quickly there.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2019 general fund budgeted transfers.
Second. Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, to approve the 2018 general fund budgeted transfers. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2019 liquor fund budgeted transfer.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by LeBeau, to approve the 2018 liquor fund budgeted transfer. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2019 budgeted bond levy transfer of $189,700.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Rinkie, is on the action sheet, page 64, for the 2018 budgeted bond levy transfer. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2019 water and sewer funds budgeted transfers.
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinkie, to approve the 2019 water and sewer funds budgeted transfers. Any discussion on that? If not, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried.
I move to transfer $1,320 for the 2018 Chevy Silverado from Fund 121, general capital improvement to Funds 111, water equipment replacement, and 116 sewer equipment replacement for half of the cost of the 2018 Chevy Silverado to be paid over 10 years.
Second.
Motion by Rinkie, seconded by LeBeau, is on the action sheet, page 66. Discussion on that, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried. All right, that was fun. All right, then from our update, we have a couple easements to approve. And Ron, Renee, are you going to explain all these wonderful maps to us and what all the dotted lines mean?
Run.
What we're easing away here?
We'll let Ron.
We'll let Ron.
Okay, I guess I'll start it off. We have two easements here in front of us, in which the city would be granting easements to Meker Co-op Light and Power Association, and that is for the installation of fiber optic cable, which they are going to bring into town here. And the first one is up by the, it's out on Outlet A, Route 6, and that is at the very end of Maple Street, where the city owns a, I think it's like 30 feet right along the trail.
Correct, yes.
And the second one is out at the airport on the land just adjacent to Business 23, south of the liquor store.
Liquor store, yep.
And I guess we talked to them last week, and they intend to have this all in by the end of the year. And I don't know if you've seen the other map, but they are also intending to bring it around the industrial loop and through the downtown area.
All right, it's been a topic of discussion, and Renee's been spending some time on it, Ron too, working with them.
Ron, the map that's in the update where there's a lot of red, I mean, that, I mean, obviously, that's... I don't understand that one, but that's, that's not, they're not taking easements.
No, that's their, that's their first installation that they want to get done by the end of the year. This is where they'll be laying the fiber cow, the fiber cable for access.
Those are in, those are in street rightways or whatever. They're not asking through that.
Right, correct.
The only ones are the two pictures on the, within our original.
Very good.
And the reason for the update on there, if you look on the old one, it said that they would have the right to replace, lay, and erect. We took out the word erect, because we did not want them putting another tower or anything up in the airport zoning over, or right along the trail there. So that is what was changed from the original to the updated.
Doesn't that trail part fall in the airport zoning?
I believe you would be correct. I would too. If not, it's very close.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the electric system and fiber optic system easement between the City of Paintsville and Meker Cooperative Light and Power Association on parcel number 70-393-363-0083.
Second. Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinkie, to approve the electric system and fiber optic system easement between the City of Paintsville and Meker Co-op Light and Power Association on parcel number 70.39363.0083. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried.
And I'll make the same motion, only difference being the parcel number
Second.
Motion by Hertzberg again, and seconded by Rinkie again, to approve the easement similar to the other one, with parcel number 70.38646.0540. Discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried. And then just a note that came in the mail is an invitation to the vibrant broadband ribbon cutting ceremony over at Meker Co-op Light and Power on Thursday, September 26th. And I have a conflict that day, so anybody from the city wants to attend, certainly welcome to. And go and play bingo.
The governor's going to be there.
Pancakes and visit with the governor. All right, nothing else on that? We'll move on to, we've got a couple minutes yet, old business, the police fire and wellness plans. We'll let Renee give an update here. She's been working with several people and getting all our questions answered there.
Well, we met with our labor union attorney last week. She reviewed the options we have for, we kind of looked at it in three parts. The physical, the gym section, the counseling section, and the religious section. She gave us some options that we can look into in all three, and then we'll bring it back to the committee, and then we'll forward it to council. I'm working on collecting that data so that the committee can make a decision on their recommendation. Anything you guys want to add?
The, you told, gave the chief that I had to work on the one, his part, right?
I haven't yet.
Oh, you, oh.
He wasn't in today.
Oh, he wasn't in.
He wasn't in, then he wasn't in.
Okay, well...
And we had a meeting, and it just...
Oh, okay, well, let him know.
I'll fill him in.
Okay, well, you can probably fill in the whole council while you're here then.
On the religious part?
Yeah.
On the religious section, the city attorney recommended that anybody would like to participate in the religious section of the wellness plan should establish a prayer chain and have independent email addresses to communicate that outside of the city being involved.
That part can proceed without any city council action or approval or whatever. That would be totally up to the chief or whoever to start that, that part. And then the rest of it, we'll be working on. Continue to get that hammered out. A reminder of the October League Regional Meeting.
Yes.
We'll be covering that also. Any other questions on that, anything to add?
Do we know one that's going to be met on again?
I would say probably within the next, before the next council meeting. Can we have this back on the agenda then?
Yeah, it'll be on the... The understanding was it'd be on the agenda till it gets taken care of. That was my understanding, anyway. Okay, it is up 6:28, okay. And a couple of minutes. It'll probably take me two to get down to the next item. 2019 street drainage project. Chuck, can you give us a verbal report? Then we have a payment estimate to take.
Yeah, the construction on the 2019 improvement project continues to move forward. The utility work along Maple Street, as well as Circle Pines, excuse me, Court, has been completed. The gravel's been placed along Maple Street, so hopefully that curb and gutter gets installed here in the very near future. The contractor currently is starting to work on the utilities along Ponderosa, and once they're complete, they will move up to the service road to do those utilities, and then finally along Burr Street. So as mentioned in your packet, there's a copy of pay request number three for the project in the amount of $339,124.15 for work completed through August 27th.
I'll make the motion to approve payment estimate number three in the amount of $339,124.15 payable to Voss Plumbing meeting of Paintsville Incorporated.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg, to approve... Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Hertzberg to approve payment estimate number three in the amount of $339,124.15 payable to Voss Plumbing and Heating of Painesville Inc., discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried? Anything else on that? That's it, alright, then it is 6:30 and we will recess the city council meeting and call to order the public hearing in regards to the requests from the Mueller's for a variance. And that is, let me get down to the right page here. Starting on page 84, and they would like to, well, the purpose of the variance is they want to expand an existing non-conforming garage, they're enlarging it. And it's a structure that sits by itself on the, on the lot, correct? There's no dwelling on there, so that is the read, the need for the variance. Planning board has reviewed this, recommends approval, anything to add from the planning board or staff? Anybody here to speak for or against the variance?
Can I ask a question?
That's one, yes.
I guess I was looking at this and I'm wondering what the undue hardship is that would be created? And it says on here that the variance means the property in question cannot be put to a reasonable use under the conditions allowed by the zoning ordinance. Economic considerations alone do not constitute an undue hardship.
It's usable as is, correct? The garage is usable as is, right?
Uh, yes.
Mm-hmm.
It is in need of repair. It's in need of repair, so I didn't want to stick the money into repairing it for 22-foot garage. For me, it's not worth it, so, so I wanted to add eight feet on to make it a usable space and then I feel like it's worth investing the money to reboof it, re-site it, fix it up so it'll last a while.
What's the width of the lot on there?
The width of the lot, 80 feet.
80 feet. I know that would be a question too.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, maybe somebody from the planning commission could fill us in on why they agree that there was an undue hardship.
The overall consensus at the end of the planning commission meeting was a nicer garage is going to improve not only the property value there but in the general neighborhood as well by eliminating the plight of a rundown garage. And the undue hardship is, it's difficult to use for everything we want to use it for now, essentially. Difficult to get a boat into a garage that's small, impossible perhaps, but difficult. That was the question that the planning commission struggled with a little bit as well. But at the end of the day, it kind of, the benefits outweigh the downfalls of the undue hardship.
Other than expanding the garage, do you have any plan to do anything else with that property in the future?
Not at this time. I understand your rules for not allowing a garage to be built on a residential lot before there's a house there, there was a house here at one time, the garage is in the back of the lot. It doesn't in any way prohibit anybody from building a house there in the future the way this garage is sitting on the lot. And, and perhaps, I don't think I'll ever build a house there, but if I sell the lot, it's still, anybody can put a house on there. And, and, and they're more likely to do it if there's a maintained building there instead of a rundown building that needs to be removed before they can build anything.
So, did you own the property when the house burned down?
No.
You've bought it since then?
Yes.
Those monitoring wells, they wouldn't come into play with if there was to be a house built on that lot, would they?
No, there's other properties that's block over that have monitoring wells. Some have planted bushes around them, but no.
And we have struggled with this periodically, you know, Bill brings this up all the time and it, you know, is potentially something that needs to be dealt with in the zoning if we're going to keep having these come before us or we just, or the council stops approving it.
And your honors, we did not change this in the zoning that's going to be coming forward?
Yeah.
Yet.
There's still time.
Yes.
There's a driveway that goes to the garage, right?
Pardon?
There's a driveway that goes up to the garage, right?
There is a driveway, yes.
And we talked about this in the planning, so just a reminder, that's on your lot.
That's correct.
Used by the neighbors, right?
That's correct, there's a driveway on our lot that goes to the garage and a curb cut, yes.
We don't have, have a lot of properties in town like this, correct, other than this one?
With existing structures on that are by themselves, I don't think so.
I can think of one other.
I can think of one up by, used to be next to Ole Suggs here, there's just a garage. Not sure who owns it right now, one time I believed.
Up by, up by, where, like, mountains.
Shainey's garage, nobody's been owned by Shainey?
Yeah.
Yeah, very kind of corner there.
No, 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 this is a blue one next to Ole Suggs, the garden. Jean is in there now with his daughter. Right across the road from, well, Pastor Bob's and...
So it's...
I believe, I thought one time Joe Burke had owned it.
I don't remember the name, just a crowd.
Who's across the street, or he, oh, he owned that, owned that, owned that lot?
I thought so, I'm not sure, I have no idea who owns it now.
I'm just wondering, like, are we going to be setting a precedent here to, you know, if there's a lot of other properties that are still...
Every, every, every time we approve a variance, it's a potential precedent.
At this point, nobody can build this garage without a house first.
Right.
But this is a little different situation that...
In terms of lot coverage with the expanded garage, what percentage of, I mean, there's still plenty of lot coverage, basically.
Oh, an 80, 80-foot lot?
Yeah.
Now, this is really back in the, far east, it's all from...
I wish I had an 80-foot lot.
You'd never would've got to be there.
Well, I think I agree that improving the garage would improve the property and make it more saleable in the future, whether somebody puts a house there or not or neighbor subdivided or whatever, would happen. So with that, I'll make the motion.
We can, we're still in the hearing.
We're still, okay.
Anything else for the hearing? If not, we'll close the hearing and reopen the council meeting and now you would be in order there, Mr. Hertzberg.
Uh, I'll make the motion to approve the variance determination.
I'll second.
Motion by Hertzberg, seconded by Rinkie to approve the variance determination, discussion?
Do we have defined in our ordinances what an undue hardship is defined as?
I mean, I, I think it's, it's set forth in, in a fair amount of detail in the, in the findings. You know, basically, an undue hardship means that the property is unusable without the variance. I mean, that, that's the gist of the definition in the state statute is that the property can't be put to a reasonable use without being granted a variance. And that's the hard part is because to me, that's clearly not true. I get that we have historically granted a lot of variances where that is not true. We have been very liberal in granting variances and we always have, but this is another circumstance. I have no doubt that the improvement will make the property more valuable and more usable, but technically, it doesn't meet the criteria that the legislature's created for us that, you know, is that the property would be not reasonably usable without, without a variance. But, you know, and, and the notion that it's going to improve it and make it more saleable, I guess that kind of cuts both ways, you know, because you're kind of creating a situation where you allow the property to more easily be put to a use. I mean, your, your ordinance is designed to encourage residential uses in residential neighborhoods, not a garage that's for storage of a boat, but, you know, I, I get it. I mean, I get that there's the other pressure to make it look nice and to, to do all that stuff. I, I, I fully understand, but I think technically it doesn't imply with what the legislature had in mind. But it wouldn't, it's not going to be the first time that we've done something like this, but it's, it's not, I, I think we, you know, I'm hoping that when we have our new zoning ordinance and if we, if the full council reviews and adopts that ordinance, that in the future, we'll be more strict about variances because a variance should really be a very, very rare occurrence, should almost never happen, but I don't want to interfere with your decision-making process, but that's, that's my view of it.
Yes.
You know, and I know that's not always been the direction that we've gone, so.
That was going to be my question, Bill, how do we ring it in?
Well, I'm hoping that this, that when we adopt this new ordinance, that the people that are sitting on the council today, when that gets approved, will be invested in that enough to say, we're going to live with this and we're going to make people live with it and, and go forward. And then hopefully, I know there's always changeovers in councils and maybe that thins out over time, but I hope that there's always enough carryover that people will remember that we did this stuff for a reason, you know? So, it, it's hard, I, I, I know, but, but that's, you know, the way I look at it is you should, you should enforce your ordinances and so I encourage us to, to try to get to that point and to carefully look at what we're coming to you with and when we adopt that to be more stringent in our application of the criteria for variance.
But on the other hand, there are, you know, other ordinances that are not enforced either. You know, that's not to say that's right.
You're not supposed to point that out, Jeff.
Yep, but, there are, but a lot of those are because, you know, these are things that are brought to you.
The facts are in front of you, you don't have to be looking for them. In some cases, you've got to send out an investigator to find out. These, these are kind of in your face.
That was kind of tongue-in-cheek, but it, I, you know, I understand, I've heard it, heard it several times and, you know, then you get down to, you know, the reasonableness, you know, reasonable, like you say, is kind of open to interpretation.
It is.
You know, in a, in a rural area like here where, you know, in, in our community, older towns, where lot sizes are smaller and people have grown to have, you know, needs to store their toys and things like that, things do, do change.
Yep, and I think you'll see that the new ordinance tries to address that somewhat, you know, it's not perfect. You can't, you know, you can't deal with every little thing, but, but I think there's been an effort made.
I'd feel different too, if at every variance hearing that we had, there were people there that showed up to, you know, to be against it, but...
But you know the problem with that?
I know.
Is that, is that when, when people like their neighbors and they know their neighbor's going to do a nice job on the garage, which I have no doubt will happen here, they're not going to object. But when they don't like their neighbor or they question whether they'll do a nice job, then they're going to object, but it's the same variance.
Yep.
You know, and so sometimes you have the almost identical situations and you get a roomful of people that want to object in one case and in the other you get none. So it's, that's not really a good litmus test.
We haven't actually had a situation quite like this.
No, we never have, that I can recall. I, I would, I would say that this has never happened to the best of my knowledge. It is, it is unusual, you know, it, it's got some unique characteristics, for sure.
Hopefully, we'll only have one more garage that we'd have to deal with, right?
There you go.
Anything, did that answer all our questions? Hey, we do have a motion and a second, if my memory assures me right, yep, by Hertzberg and Rinkie, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried, alright.
Thank you.
Approved, thank you, Richie.
Now you can get busy. Now you can get busy.
Then, item E, expansion project for AMPI.
Yes, just to give a quick update on that project.
Did you have some?
Well, I was wondering, did the copier skip that because I don't have...
After the information.
After the informational.
Oh, fake me out.
Yeah, me too.
Well, hmm, interesting.
Blame Marco or whatever, right?
No, you can probably blame me.
Oh.
Was it the new copier?
Yep.
No, it's probably me.
Okay, Chuck.
Alright, just to give an update on the project, the contractor continues to work on the, the construction of the new pretreatment facility out at the wastewater treatment plant. They'll continue to try to get that, at least the shell of the building up before winter and then continue to work on the project over the winter. In addition, they've been working on the forest main between the wastewater treatment plant and town. A lot of that's been installed by directional drilling and they hope to finish that actually tomorrow. Moving forward, they'll continue to work on the building and they'll, they'll also plan to start the steel casing work beneath the tracks in the near future, so that, that work will be coming, so. In your packet is a copy of pay request number two for the project in the amount of $85,109.06 for work completed in August.
Did they go under the river with that?
That's what they're working on right now.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve payment number two in the amount of $85,109.06 payable to Eagle Construction Company Incorporated.
One second.
And a motion by Hertzberg, seconded by just about everybody else on the council. We'll go with LeBeau, I guess, my dominant ear on the left side. To approve payment number two in the amount of $85,109.06 payable to Eagle Construction Company, Inc., discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, none, not carried? Alright, and our update here, on the K-9 squad, the chief.
Thank you, so at the last meeting, you guys had asked me to reach out to the city weight park, get some firm numbers. I spoke with Chief Entrude and they're one of their sergeants, I can't remember his last name now, and discussed with them a firm pricing for that squad. I was able to negotiate a, a price of $8,000 for the squad car. That $8,000 includes everything but the radar, the camera system and the radio. Three of those items, or two of those items, we currently have, we actually have all three, but the radar system that's currently in the K-9 squad is definitely, needs to be replaced and that was slated to be replaced anyways. That is an item that can transfer to any vehicle that we buy, so it's not an expense that, you know, if we spend the money on that, is going to go to waste. I did also get some preliminary costs to outfit a new squad. The information I got from Emergency Auto Tech was that we were looking at approximately $7,000 for the equipment that would need to go into a new squad car. That's in addition to the radar and then the install work. that's in addition to the radar and then the install work on that. So that actually, that number came in a little bit higher than even what was estimated before. Craig Elfring and I went up today, took a look at the Wake Park squad car. We threw it up on a hoist, took it for a test drive. The information I got from Craig was that the squad looks really good. He doesn't see any leaks from any of the fluids in it. The engine had, like I mentioned before, it had a recall issue with it that ultimately had caused a fire in the engine. So basically, the entire upper half of that engine has been completely replaced, and based on Craig's assessment, looks actually really, really good. According to him, he said the squad should last quite some time. It would be, I guess, my recommendation at this point, just based on the circumstances, the budgeting, issues that may be coming as far as the overall city budget in the coming years, that I would recommend that the city reaches out to Wake Park and purchases that squad car. I would look to run that squad car till at least kind of in that 2022, 2023 range. Reason being is that will get us past the first year run on the Chevy, Chevy Tahuhs that they're currently going to be making come next year. So it would put us in the second year run of those cars. So hopefully, they'll have worked out any bugs and kinks and everything else. And based on the mileage, it's got eighty-five thousand miles on it. It should more than get us to that point. All basically Craig said that he saw was it's going to need some brakes here eventually, and then we'll probably need to get some snow tires, being it is strictly real drive come winter.
What year is this, Paul?
It's a 2012.
So that eight thousand would include the kennel that was, had been taken out? Will that be put back in?
Correct. So we'll have eight thousand dollars invested with the City of Wake Park. We will probably have some money that we will have to invest to get that kennel put back in. I talked with Craig on our drive up there today. It sounds like he would be kind of doing exactly what he did with the Crown Victoria. They keep it down at his shop. They would work on it over time. We do have some time to get it up in, you know, the way we want it. So between cleaning it up, reinstalling the cage or the kennel portion of that, getting the radar system here, the radar system's going to run about three thousand dollars, and then transferring the couple of items over that we would need, so.
And then the plan would still be to keep the Crown Victoria as a backup?
I would think so. I think we could probably put it over in our garage and keep it as a backup. The one issue that we will have is if something were to happen, we'll have to repull out the camera system and the radar and the radio out of that Tahoe if something were to happen, because we'll have to remove those from the Crown Victoria.
Well, I will make the motion to go ahead and purchase the 2012 Chevy Tahoe from Wake Park for the amount of eight thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion by LeBeau, seconded by Ranki to approve the purchase of the 2012... How do you count it?
Tahoe.
Tahoe, yeah. It's a Chevy, not a GMC, right? For eight thousand dollars. Discussion?
Your Honor, I have one. What about the equipment that we've been accumulating for the new vehicle that won't fit into a vehicle in 2022 and 2023?
There's nothing that we have that I'm aware of that won't go into a later vehicle. So the only, the equipment that we have so far is like the Hot Pop system, stuff like that. We did talk to Wake Park about that, because I think there was a recall on part of their stuff. And in my conversations with them and Craig, it's basically the exact same system. So what the Hot Pop is, is it is just strictly a sensor-based system that if, like, the door, if you need that door to open up, the, you know, the hammer hits a button, the door pops open. So it's not necessarily a car-specific thing, other than it's, it requires like the, like the Tahoe's a heavier door, so it has to be a beeped-up system, while the Hot Pop system that we got was for a Chevy Tahoe.
So you would put it in the 2012?
I don't know that we would need it in the 2012, so we would probably hold on to that and save that for the new squad. If need be, it could be put in the 2012. Because there's, the way I understood it from talking with them today, their system they have in there, just recently had a component of that done. They've got, they replaced the arm or the shock on that that the door pops open with. So it's my understanding that their system is, functions really well, so we wouldn't necessarily replace it unless we needed to.
And the three thousand dollars for the radar system, is that part of the seven thousand dollars that you would have paid for the new one?
No, it's not.
So you have some, you had something for the new vehicle?
The plan was always to purchase a new radar for that one.
Was that part of the seven thousand?
No. No, the seven thousand quote that I got from EATI does not include, because that has to come through from a separate vendor.
What is included in that seven thousand, then?
So with that, we have the cage system, or the kennel link system, a cargo box, which would allow Tom to house a lot of the stuff that he needs. We've got a K-9 fan, the center console for the squad itself. Let's see here, a light bar for the squad car, and I believe a, the siren speaker, I believe. And then just a mounting bracket, stuff like that. And then everything else that would transfer over would have been items that can transfer out of the Crown Victoria over into, so like some of the smaller individual-type lights would go over. Oh, and the push bumper.
Is the Crown Vic, is that leaking tranny fluid right now?
I've heard that it is. I don't know.
So if it is, is it worth keeping? I mean, because if it's leaking by the time you need it, it could be out, and then you're going to take time to try to patch it.
I don't disagree with you on that, Renee. To be honest with you, it's probably not worth keeping it. I just don't know, I don't know what we would do as far as disposing of it. You know, I don't know where the value might be for us on it. I mean, we tried to sell the last one, you know, with no luck. It is something I would probably look to actually change, maybe throw up on MinBid, and we could do it that way, and see what, you know, doing a more localized auction site, see if we could actually get somebody that wants it. And I'd probably throw both of the cars up there, because there would be no reason to keep the blue squad either.
I think that makes sense.
They don't make a bars leak for transmission, right?
A what?
Bars leak?
No.
Lucas. Short term.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second. Any other questions? Discussion? Not? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? None? Not carried? Even an unusual lead, that's it for business informational. We've got the liquor store report from August and the other reports. And just a reminder, you can find just about everything now on the new website, if you know where to look.
And if you can't find it, just give me a holler.
Okay. I know, I was confused the first time.
We'll add it.
All right. No word, Jerry. It's less than an hour.
It does still say on there that those are...